Okay. I'd like to call to order October 12th, 2011, meeting of Milton School Committee. And as is our custom, I invite you to stand as you're able and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so moving on to approving our agenda. One correction I am going to make to it. The executive session lists some minutes. I did distribute some other minutes for the executive session, but an issue arose this afternoon as well, so we will have an executive session, but it will also be for an issue of contract negotiations pertaining to the Milton Educators Association. So that will be another topic under the executive session. Are there any other amendments, additions, et cetera, to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, then we will declare that approved and move along. First, minutes of September 14th. Any kind of motion? Some moves?
Second?
Move by Mr. Cahane, second by Ms. Sheridan. Any comments, corrections, additions, amendments?
I do.
Yes?
Under the chairman's report, the 350th birthday celebration, it should be-
Thank you, which page?
I'm sorry, page five.
Thank you. That's fast.
I can give these to you, Ann, if you want. I just edited the document. So where it says, the second line, "Which include," it should be year-long list of activities, a series of arts and musical events, historical trolley tours, and an oral history project. Instead of saying the final celebration, it should be the big event celebration, because actually, we're having year-long activities from January to June. And I have one other on page six, the very, very last line, where it says, Mrs. Sheridan stated she had information about an MCAS forum, and it wasn't MCAS, it was communication, but actually, we missed the deadline for that because of our meeting change, so it's a moot point, but-
It was-
It was just a communication session with high school students and school committee members, so.
So just want to say about holding a forum?
Sure.
Okay. So we'll just delete the N in "MCAS." And on the other one, if you'll-
A Brenly amendment.
If you'll give Ms. Brenly the verbiage, so she can amend it. Anything else with respect to the September 14th minutes? We moved in second, seeing no other discussion. All those in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. And the October 3rd minutes, which were, that was a finance subcommittee meeting, which we actually had a quorum of school committees, posed as a school committee meeting, and so we have devoted minutes in this session.
With approval.
Yes.
There is executive session at the bottom of this, which I think needs to be separated out, so I would say we table these minutes until such time that they're separated, and then we could have them.
There are no minutes there.
It says-
The group didn't, it says, although it was on the agenda, that we didn't meet an executive session.
So these are, this is not the agenda, it is the minutes. And so if we didn't meet an executive session-
It shouldn't be here.
-executive session shouldn't be there, I don't think.
So all of number four should be deleted from this document?
I would think so.
Yeah, actually, that number four.
And shouldn't be number four.
The number three that precedes it is probably number seven. So why don't we hold this off, and we'll correct this and pick them up at our next meeting?
Yep.
And one more added, too.
Thank you.
Should Margaret Gibbons be listed as an attendee?
Yes, be a guest. We'll adjust these minutes and bring them back at a later time. All right, so we move on to citizen speak. Carrie Peliquin. And friend. Please just take a second to introduce yourself.
I will do that. I'm Carrie Peliquin, co-president of the Tucker PTO, and this is Kristin, oh, sorry, you can introduce yourself.
No, that's okay. I'm Kristin LaCass, I'm the co-vice president of the Tucker PTO.
And it's great excitement that we're here tonight, and we wanted to share some great news with all of you. Some years back, the Tucker School used to have an annual fair, and at one point, we raised a surplus of funds, and that money was taken and put into a money market account with the thought that we would use it in the future for capital improvements that would benefit the current and future students. And after a great deal of consideration, the boards decided that it's time to use the money. As many of you know, there's been a district-wide push to install smart board technology in all of the schools, and this effort's been supported by the school department, Milton Foundation for Education, and PTOs at each school. And tonight, we're thrilled to tell you that we are going to have, we're going to purchase the remaining seven classrooms at the Tucker for the equipment, so all of Tucker will be 100 equipped with the smart board technology by Thanksgiving. We're the first elementary school, I believe, in town to fulfill this, I'm not going to say obligation, but to fulfill this, and we wanted to thank the Tucker community for their contributions over the years. Without them, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in, and we just wanted to let everybody know, we're very thrilled.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Did you hear about sharing with the staff?
Oh, we, Marcia pulled the staff in yesterday morning.
She see, it may be-
Oh, yeah, Marcia, come on over. Good evening, everyone. So the whole staff was pulled together yesterday.
On Tuesday, right after the holiday break, and for some very important news, so of course, they were nervous, because it was before school in the morning, and we were able to share this incredible news, and it's such a wonderful gift. We still have third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade classrooms to equip with smart boards, and the teachers are ready to go. So it's very exciting. Yesterday morning, I just went around in the morning with my camera between nine o'clock and nine-thirty, and every room that had a smart board that I went into was using it in some fashion in that one half-hour block. So they will be thoroughly used throughout the day, and it's an incredible supplement to our program.
Yes, go ahead.
John Phelan, our professional development committee, has professional development planned through the whole year, grade-specific, subject-specific, so we are thrilled, we are very, very appreciative. I felt like we've been sitting on a huge secret.
[laughing]
And to Mascha Yaretsky's point later, we have the high school team here presenting on the Advanced Placement Program, and the first teacher that I saw with a smart board is in the audience, Michelle Cruiser, and I often said, used her as my example, and she doesn't know it, it was like her third arm. And so for those teachers who are skilled and incorporate the smart board, it is a phenomenal technology for our students and for our staff.
Yeah, it's phenomenal.
Very exciting news for the Tucker School. Congratulations, and so thank.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Laura, I would just add that I had the pleasure of touring a number of schools with Mary a few weeks ago, and the smart boards are phenomenal tools, so this is great, great news, congratulations.
Yeah, the kids are really excited, too, so.
If I could say one more thing, I think you should start a class in money market accounts. Where can we invest?
Fund-raising?
Fund-raising's our strong suit.
Yes. We have a great community, so, you know, it really pays, so we're thrilled.
Yes, and we use MFE money as well to help fund it, so that was from last year. So it's been, it's been an incredible contribution just between the school system, the MFE, and then the Tucker parents fulfilling the final push for it. So it's very exciting. Our kindergartners, you know, are growing up, and so then we hit third grade, and they stopped having the technology, so this allows us to continue that. When I need to know something, I go to kindergarten, and they say, "Mrs. Yu, put the marker down, then you can use the smart board." So the kids are very savvy with it, very comfortable with it.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else for citizen speak? This is the only folks signed in. All right, so now we will move on to the superintendent's report. Ms. Brenly?
Chairman Pavlicek. First, we have a guest from Milton High School. If the guest would join us up at the table with the school committee and the public. And during the year, we have agenda topics that we report out on the academic success of our students in the Milton Public Schools. Tonight, we have a presentation on Milton High School's Advanced Placement Program. This group has put a tremendous amount of thought into this presentation. Dr. Aranju, I'm going to turn the introductions over to you, if you don't mind, and then your kickoff person, Yolanda Beach. Welcome, and thank you for coming.
I think most of these faces are probably easily recognizable.
Maybe for the public.
You know, Mr. Alan Cron, who has been a vice principal at Milton High School for years, Mrs. Beach, likewise, the second vice principal, Ken Aubert, who is the director of guidance, Barbara, Barbara Wright, who is the English Social Studies Department Chair of Humanities, Michelle Cruiser, who is the Math Department Chair. And I don't know what I'm doing up here. I've only stumbled into this place like six, eight weeks ago, so bear with me. We're going to have Mrs. Beach make a brief presentation on AP and results, and we can, when she is through, we will sort of rotate through three of the folks who are seated to my right, who will talk specifically about math and the social studies, and then about the AP scholars. Mrs. Beach.
Well, good evening. You know, when we think about our Advanced Placement Program, this is such an important part of our academic program at Milton High School, because it really anchors our academic program. It's the capstone or the pinnacle of what we do. Our goal is to prepare our students for future success. They're here for four years, most of them go on to higher education, whether two-year, four-year college, but whatever their career choice is, our goal is to get them ready. We want our students to be able to compete with the best of the best. We want them to be deep thinkers, critical thinkers, and Advanced Placement courses are the way to get them ready. There are so many advantages to taking AP, and not in any particular order, but one is even just getting the experience. We understand that the scores range from a one, being the lowest, to a five, being the highest score that one can earn on an AP exam, and regardless of the score, that experience of taking a college course at high school, on the high school level, is awesome. We want to build their confidence. We want them to get that taste of what college will be like. In addition to that, they're able to cover subjects more deeply, they're able to cover more sophisticated themes and topics. Statistically, we've also found that for students who don't do well on PSATs, but take an AP course in their junior year, that for those students who do well, their SAT scores are also directly correlated. There's a substantial increase in their SAT scores. And so AP, again, has a number of advantages. In addition to that, college credits, so that 90% of the colleges and universities will give college credits for those students who qualify. So when we talk about qualifying, that is earning a score of a three, four, or five. And so when students qualify and they get to earn the college credit, many of our students take two or more AP courses, so that can wind up being savings. You know, we talk about, you know, the economic times that we're in, and many families would like to save money. And again, there are numerous advantages. It's, of course, favorable on your college application. Colleges see that as a student who has taken rigorous courses, a student who has that experience. I know sometimes people are wondering about, well, how do students find out about AP? How do they, you know, enroll? How do they sign up for these classes? And looking back historically, up until 1997, it was very exclusive. It was that interview process, it was that, you know, you had to be chosen, and it was, again, a very tight-knitched kind of a group. And since that time, we really opened the doors. Enrollment is open for Advanced Placement classes, and we want that, because we want our students to have that experience. And just a little bit, you'll hear about what we do to prepare our teachers, because, of course, teachers need to be equipped to teach these college-based courses, and of course, what we do to support our students, because we want them to succeed. We want them taking AP, but we also want AP scores increasing as well. So in terms of how do they do it, how do they find out about it? Our guidance counselors, they go into the middle schools so that they talk to the students about the courses that they can take, the classes they can take at high school. So they learn about college prep and honors and AP. We also have a program of Studies Night, and also, on the high school level, every year, our guidance counselors go into their classes, so when it's time in February to think about, what will I take next year, that's also a part of the conversation, is AP. Our teachers as well meet with students in order to help them to decide, okay, what course would be good for you to take next year? But I would like to add that, let's say if a teacher says, okay, based upon your performance in this class, I think you would be good for college prep, or I think you'll be good for honors. If that student says, you know what, I'd like to try AP, I'd like to take an AP course, then absolutely that student can do that with their parents' permission, and we do encourage parents to have a conversation with the teacher. So that this way, the parents can have an understanding, okay, here's how they did this year, can they take AP? Yes, but here's what they need to do to get ready for it. And we have seen success. We have seen that when you raise the expectations, students rise to the occasion. When they're in a class with others who are also taking this same coursework, then they buck up and they buckle down. So we have seen the success. One of the things that I think people wonder about is the cost of the exam. It's $87 to take the AP exam, and for students who are part of the federal free and reduced lunch program, it's a reduced cost, it's $46 approximately. Let's say if there's a hardship, let's say if a family says, you know, 46 is too hard for me. You know, I've spoken to our director of guidance, Ken Aubert, and he says that we do make arrangements. When there are hardship cases, we absolutely take that into consideration, because, again, we don't want our students to not be able to take these classes. When we take a look at the data, looking at the AP results, the exams from May of 2011, last school year, we can see on this chart, there's a range. So when we look back to 2001, the number of students taking the test was 167, but we can see, as of last year, in 2011, that there were 276 students who took the AP exam. On average, our students take approximately two AP exams on average. I should note that these numbers are a combination of juniors and seniors. We can also see the number of tests taken has increased, it has almost doubled in this time period as well. And when you see the percent qualifying, the 54%, again, that's students who received a three, four, or five. I would like to just highlight a few more things that we've noticed in the data as well, because there are a number of significant things that stand out to us. We've noticed that there 21% of the test takers, so 21% of the 276 were students of color, and our goal is to increase diversity in these upper-level classes. We have also seen that 23% increase in the number of test takers that are qualifying, meaning receiving a three, four, or five. Now, when we look at Milton High School compared to the state, and compared to the national average as well, there was a 10% increase on the state level and an 8% increase on the national level. Again, Milton High was a 23% increase in the number of test takers qualifying, and that's what we like to see. Again, it's about preparing our students to compete with the rest of the world. We also noticed that 23% of the students who earned a three, four, or five, 23% of those students were students of color, and that also represents, you know, again, this is a comparison from 2011 to the prior year 2010. Over the past two years, when we're looking at the number of students of color who are taking AP, over the past two years, there's been a 46% increase in the number of students of color who are taking AP. And this is coming from conversations with teachers. This is coming from the encouragement, from administrators, from teachers, from a collaborative effort with department heads and directors as well. One of the things that we've also noticed as well is that Milton enrollment in AP classes compared to the state, we're constantly outpacing the state in terms of enrollment in AP. So when we look back to 2006, that's roughly a 27% increase, or I should say, we are above in the comparison to what the state enrollment is. And again, our goal is to get more and more of our students taking AP, because we want them to have that experience. Again, whether they get a one, two, three, four, or five, we think that's critical. And you'll get to hear a few stories about a few of our students as well, in terms of the benefits to them in having taken AP. What I'd like to do is I'd like to just allow Barbara Wright, Director of Humanities, as well as Michelle Cruiser, our Math Department Head, to talk about how do we prepare our teachers? How do we equip them to teach these classes? How do we prepare and support our students? Because support is very important, we want the success. We can't just put them in the classes, there's more that we have to do. And in addition to that, they can also talk about the curriculum, because that's also a part of supporting our students.
So I wanted to talk about how we help our teachers with their professional development. Before I do so, I just want to say, I coached lacrosse here for years, and I had often had students come back and visit, and they would tell me that they were traveling to France or to Australia and traveling abroad for their junior year, and one of the reasons they were able to do that is because they got the AP credits in high school, and so those were fewer classes they had to take at the college level, and so they were able to take these trips and have these great experiences because of their AP classes at high school. We also had a student who graduated from college in three years, in part due to the fact that she had taken AP courses in the high, at the high school level, and therefore was able to save, maybe what, $50,000 by taking these AP courses? So it was pretty cool. As far as our teachers, we do support our teachers who teach AP courses. There's all kinds of training, most of it is through the College Board that administers the test. There's, there are day-long sessions for training, there's a couple on special topics that they offer in November for the APs. There's also online training that teachers can take, and we also have, a lot of our teachers have taken the Summer Institute up in St. Johnsberry, Vermont, and it's a week-long intensive AP training course, and the teachers really like it, and they get to spend the weeks working with other teachers who teach AP from all throughout New England, and so that's a great experience. We also are working on training our teachers who are not teaching AP, because we want to build the program, we want all of our students to be ready to take AP classes by the time they hit junior and senior year. So we have, we are training different teachers to teach the pre-AP courses and getting our students ready for those, the academic rigor of an AP course. Michelle is going to talk about some of the things, some of the things that we do for curriculum in that regard. And one other thing, also for our AP students, we do offer extra support. We have morning sessions, we have afternoon sessions, kids come in on the weekends. So our AP stu, our AP teachers are dedicated to having our AP students do really well, and you'll see, when we get closer and closer to the AP exams, there's a crunch time, and kids are going before school, after school, looking for extra help. There's all kinds of help for our students.
And with those extra help sessions, sometimes they are just, you know, random help on different topics, sometimes they're actually focused topics. I know with, at least with the math aspect, a lot of times, we'll have a set topic and work through the course bit by bit with certain focuses on Saturday mornings or something like that, so it's been very helpful. One of the things that we've done, we're currently doing to help improve the AP scores is that the department heads have been meeting with the AP teachers to talk about the results from last year. AP does publish an instructional planning report on the website, on their website, for the teachers to access, so they can see how their students performed on different parts of the exam, and we're currently meeting with the AP teachers to discuss those reports and to discuss what needs to be done to help better support their students, to better support them, what changes we need to make to the curriculum, and getting their feedback is really invaluable. So it's been very, very good discussions we've had. We've also done some work, in the Humanities, they've done some work over the past year on focusing the curriculum so that the ninth graders, the freshmen, really concentrate on the essential skills to succeed, so that they have a strong foundation, so they can excel in ninth grade and beyond, to set them up to be able to take AP courses later on in their career. Some of these skills are note-taking, critical thinking skills, writing and communicating, et cetera. In mathematics, we're, in our first year of our three-year implementation of our new curriculum, which is a six-through-12 initiative, and that integrated sequence in the high school will definitely better prepare our students for taking AP math courses. In addition, with the writing of the new curriculum, we've included pre-AP instructional activities in the curriculum, from teachers who have gone to pre-AP workshops, or from AP questions that we've done vertical teaming activities on, so that we can take an AP question and write it down, so that you can start to look at that type of question from grade nine on, and in some cases, from grade six on. Additionally, in mathematics, we revised the pre-calculus curriculum, so that at the end of the school year, students will see more of a preview of what calculus they're going to be taking in the fall. So we've arranged it so, pretty much the last term of the pre-calculus course, they're doing limits, they're getting into derivatives, all the way through the chain rule, if you know what that is. But getting pretty far, so that they have a preview, so when they go into their senior year, you know, they've already seen a lot of the calculus. For science, they've been working hard on vertical teaming activities, so that all teachers from grade six through 12 are aware of the curricular connections. This is really helpful in the middle and high school level, they know what's going on in the courses, they have a clear articulation of the AP expectations, and they're going to continue this work throughout the school year. And also, with the sciences and all of the AP courses, whenever possible, we try to have, we're trying to have more than one teacher teach an AP course, so that the teachers can work together and make changes, do common instructional activities, just to make the courses better. And then also in science, they are starting to revise their curriculum, because there's a big change in the science AP exams starting next school year with the AP bio exam, so they're starting to change over their curriculum, so that it reflects the new changes in the AP bio exam with more inquiry-based work and a focus on conceptual understanding, so they're rearranging it a little bit. So big changes will come in science in the next few years.
Can I ask one thing?
Go ahead.
Just, would you clarify for the public, Michelle, that we have a program at the elementary school, a co-taught, where there are two teachers in a classroom. When you said two teachers teach, you mean two groups of students?
Two groups of students, yes.
So there aren't two teachers in an AP classroom?
Not two teachers in one classroom, but two, teaching two separate classes, just so that they can collaborate.
And I think that speaks to, as we look at the offerings which you're going to discuss, English had a number, a very low number, under 10, and then now you have two classes of...
We have a total, I think, 46 students taking AP?
Right, so two teachers dividing those students into classes. So I just didn't want the public to think, with an Advanced Placement class, we put two teachers in the classroom. The numbers merit that we have two full classes in several of the AP offerings.
And just to add to that, in the English department, we also added an 11th-grade AP course, too, that has over 50 students. So we did that in the last five years.
There are two AP courses, two distinct courses. One is called Language and Composition, the other one is called Literature and Composition. And each of those sections this year, I think there's 50 in the Language and Composition and 50 in the Literature and Composition. And the same thing applies, as you look down the line, I think I have most heavily enrolled classes, macroeconomics, the two English courses, and I think AP Biology, I think those are the ones with the greatest number, there were at least four sections, in some cases more. Sorry.
Ms. Sheridan, any questions?
I just wanted to say, Michelle, you talked briefly about the vertical articulation, which is so powerful in education, to be able to look at cross-grade level curriculum and how it's impacted. Can you just talk a little bit more about that, so people at home can understand that work, that good work that's happening?
So the whole point is so that everybody, all the teachers from, say, grade six and on, know exactly what the end game is going to be, what will end up being expected of the students if they take AP, which is the hope that we get everybody taking AP in the end. So one way we do it is we will start with an AP question. For example, in math, we might take, let's say, a calculus question, and we'll maybe take the picture, the graph, from the calculus question, and we'll say, you know, what can you do with this question? And you look through all the different years, so what could you do in an Algebra II course, or in our case, course II or course III? Or what could you do in a course I course? What could you do in grade eight mathematics? What could you do with this question in grade seven mathematics? What could you do with it in grade six? And pretty much every grade level- And pretty much every grade level, you can find something to do with that question. And you do a discussion about, you know, what the end result, what the whole question is in the end, and the different pieces you can cover in all the different years leading up to that end game. So that's, in brief, what it's all about. And it's a, you know, it's a group, the groups that work on this one question, it's a mixed group, so it won't be all, you know, senior teachers. It's going to be, you know, one sixth grade teacher, one seventh, one eighth, one ninth, whoever's there at the vertical teaming activity. So it's a mixed group talking about the one question and how it applies to them and in their course.
And it's not just in math?
Not just in math. No, it could be done in...
That's a great example.
Yes, sorry. But any AP course.
Right.
Sometimes it's as simple as just having common terminology from sixth through 12th grade or from first through 12th grade. You know, a topic sentence is a topic sentence in every class at every grade level. And so the kids start to understand the terminology and, you know, even just having that coordinated is a big deal.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Good evening, everyone. So to summarize, as you can see from the chart, our students this past year did very well on the exams. We had an 8% increase, I believe it was 8%, in the percentage of students who qualified with a three, four, or a five score. We also had 73 Milton High School students who earned an AP Scholar Award in 2011, which is phenomenal. The AP program offers several different AP Scholar Awards to recognize high school students who have demonstrated college-level achievement through AP courses and exams. The AP Scholar Award was granted to 44 students who received scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams. The AP Scholar with Honor Award was granted to 13 students who received an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on four or more The AP Scholar with Distinction Award was granted to 15 Milton High students who received an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more exams. And last but not least, we have a National AP Scholar. That award is granted to students in the United States who receive an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams.
So that is?
That is.
How is that possible?
Tucker Kibbe.
And so as you can hear, we have a good advanced placement program. We have successes that we're happy about. But even when you look at the statistics, we see that 54% of all those exams taken received a three, four, or five. And just in case you're curious, there were 70% that received a two or higher. So of course we want to keep getting the scores up, absolutely. I know that when we receive this data, it's the juniors and seniors together. It's all of our students who took the AP exam that year. But in terms of, if you're curious about what percentage of the 276 were juniors or were seniors, 38% of those were juniors and then 61% were seniors. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. So we have a good program, but we absolutely can make it better.
Can I have one thing?
Yes.
One thing I just wanted to add because I know there's such a focus on getting a qualifying score. And I think that's, it's really important to get a qualifying score. But there is also an advantage to a student who may not receive a qualifying score. And I have to say that out of teaching AP for many years now, the number one comment I get from former students was that, regardless of what score they had, whether it was a one or a five, is that how well they were, how well-prepared they were for their first year of college, how grateful they were that they took the course, that they were glad it was so rigorous, and that, for in my case, for math, that their first year in math, they got an A. You know? Or that it was a very, very successful year for them. And that's really something that we need to look at too. It's more than just the three, four, and five.
And the score has no impact on their final letter grade in the course because the scores are not received until the summer. And the grades have already been issued at that point. So grades are not impacted whatsoever.
Mr. Warren.
On the percent qualifying, if we compare ourselves statewide or to other similar districts, how do we stack up?
You know, one of the interesting things is that in terms of the number of test takers, based on our population, we are outpacing other comparable schools in terms of, because our enrollment is open, because it's not so exclusive. And so because we have more students who are taking the exam, one of the things you can see, you know, whether you look from '01 to 2011, when you see the numbers jump from 167 up to 276, the number of students taking AP, but looking at the percent qualifying, you see us go from 50 to 54. So one looking at that may say, hmm, well, it's just, you know, 4% increase. But we have to consider the fact that the pool has now more than doubled. And so with that, with being open to a variety of students, not just, oh, the students, you know, who are at the very top, but open to all, then we understand that we're doing this work with the curriculum in order to increase the percent qualifying. So compared to other districts, looking at the numbers, we are doing well. If we had a smaller pool, then we would see, for example, if you look at 2004, when there were 137 students, so you see fewer students, but the percent qualifying was even higher. So that's why we keep saying that, yes, what we can see is that the numbers are going up in terms of the number of students taking AP. But we also see for 4% qualifying, it is also increasing as well. But we have larger numbers that we're working with.
We have approximately 1,100 students at the high school. And when you look at other districts, what I've noticed is some districts in the Bay State, one school in particular has 1,600 students. And when I looked at their numbers, they had 193 exams given. And Milton High School had well over 500 exams given. And so it represents the philosophical difference for Milton High School. The pace that's been set is that we want more students involved. And I think now we've hit a point where we want to see not only that participation rate stay where it is, but also our amount of, number of threes, fours, and fives begin to increase as well. But the College Board is extremely interested in Milton and three other towns in the Boston area as real standout communities for the amount of participation, the diversity of participation, and the overall success of the program. So I think that our numbers represent our philosophy, but they also represent tremendous success in low-income and minority populations, which has drawn a lot of positive attention. We have a lot of work to do. We've learned a lot, but a lot to be proud of.
Just to chime in on that, it is very hard to compare us to the state because I'm aware of another comparable district right around Boston where, for instance, in math, they've had all fives for something like eight straight years. But they only allow those top 15 kids to take the course. And it's very, and when you're skimming off that absolute top level of students, you should expect them to have all fives for eight years in a row. I mean, it's a completely different philosophy than the way we treat it here.
And for those new to this in the viewing public, that was the philosophy here, that I used to say your grandmother had to sign the papers for you to get into advanced placement. And we should recognize the prior two superintendents and Dr. Arangio, who really opened up. And that was a process for those of us who are here. It was a process for teachers because they were, had been teaching AP to just that band Dr. Pavlicek was referring to. And it was a change in culture. So I was interested when you said AP is really the student who will do the work, the curriculum, that's the college-level curriculum, and the teachers with the professional development to deliver that curriculum. So it is a whole change in culture. So that chart has progress, but to me, it yells out that this is open and we encourage every student to enroll. And they're not going to enroll, we've talked about it at this table. You just don't decide in the 11th grade. It's a culture that you have to begin at the sixth grade with the teachers and the families to understand that these options are open at Milton High School.
Yes, there are, it really is a good, I mean, the AP story in Milton is a good news story. When you think nationally, we have about a million kids in the U.S. who take AP courses, AP exams. Number of tests, I think a million students comes over, well over 2 million. Just from last year to this year, we have, I think the number up there is 500, I think it's 587, 584, whatever it is. If we had, if this were, next May, we would have 660 kids at Milton High School taking AP exams. So it's gone up 13% from last year to this year. I mean, we're pushing kids in there. Are there things that we can do? Yes. I mean, one thing we can do, as Michelle talked about, is really strengthen the elementary and middle school program leading to AP. And College Board, we met with one of their staff members last week, really had talked about, you know, what are we doing compared to the rest of the state? And she hammered on that point, that's really, I mean, the term capstone, it really is the culminating event of really 11 to 12 years of school experience that you, this is the result of that. Number two is, we really need to get more of our teachers to get involved in AP training because even if they don't teach AP, the skills, the concepts, the practices that they get in those workshops are translatable into good teaching practice in high school. And the third thing we need to do, which is eventually going to be, you know, a dollar issue, is that somehow or another, we need to institutionalize AP courses to the degree that the kids who are going to be taking these exams at the end of the year get more time beyond the school day to work with their AP teacher. Right now, it's sort of a catch-as-catch-can, an ad hoc thing. We could institutionalize that. Let's say we had 28 hours of AP to every single section and we added it. I mean, you're looking at a cost, but that'll make a difference. That'll make a difference. So those three things, there's a short term, there's the long term, but it is a worthwhile endeavor. It's one of the three high-stakes tests that really make a difference along with SATs and the MCAS. So it's where you want to put your dollars. And finally, you know, we, I think my last time here, I talked about that tension between equity and excellence. I mean, the MCAS has driven us to really get all kids to pass a minimum level of competency. And I said, I talked about how schools are struggling, how to deal with that excellence. MCAS is how you deal with the excellence piece to that. Because it's taking kids who are willing to go beyond that standard and try to push these kids up. As a 16-and-a-half-year-old, 17-and-a-half-year-old, I think the average age of seniors in this country is 17-and-a-half-years-old. Take the average age of a college freshman sophomore, you're talking about 19. So these are kids who at 16-and-a-half or 17-and-a-half are doing as well as their peers, if you want to call them that, who are two years older at a university level. So it's really a good story, good news story.
Ms. Phelan.
I just want to, first of all, thank the committee for putting together this presentation and, as always, remind the community how fortunate we are to have a high school, a public high school, that offers so many AP courses, open to all children. And the achievement that we see from these students is incredible. This is the time to really show off the high school scores as a place that offers great rigor and great experience and great opportunity for all the students. If high school parents should be overjoyed that their high school is providing these opportunities and that the children are doing so well, that these teachers are taking the time before and after school and on Saturdays to support these children and these hard-working students on their own, and actually taking advantage of the PD that's offered, the AP camp, as we call it here in Milton Public Schools, that's in the summer. We pay for it through a grant from the state. It's totally grant-funded. Those teachers take that time, probably a week in St. Johnsbury, to go up and get that training and bring it back to the students. It is amazing commitment from the students. It's an amazing commitment from the teachers that teach the courses. And it's a great commitment of this administration. And as a taxpayer and a parent of high school students, very, very excited to see the high school do so well in this area and glad to celebrate it here tonight. So thank you for your hard work.
Welcome.
I had one point, and it's about money, as usual. What about the kids that can't afford it? How, I know you have free and reduce, but what about the kids that just, academically they're capable, but they just don't have the money and so they're staying in the back row? How do you bring them forward?
We pay for any student who is unable to pay for any part of the exam. We cover the cost. There are very few of those students, but they do self-identify.
And Mr. Albert isn't giving himself and his team enough credit. There's a tremendous amount of reaching out from the guidance counselors and the teachers. And so what impresses me about this team is that they go over the results, and we talk about MCAS, no child being left behind. They go over these results. They encourage particular children in particular disciplines. Again, some children might not in their own take the risk or think that they have the ability. And also working with the College Board. And we have Arthur Doyle here in Milton, who's the vice president, has been the vice president of the College Board. And he'll state publicly that the highest correlation between high school and success in college and university is one AP test. And so we have that philosophy. It's open to all students. And Dr. Arangio and Michelle Cruz's reference to teachers working, that's all work before and after school and on Saturdays with no extra salary. These teachers extend themselves, as all teachers do, pre-K through 12. But for this advanced placement, Mr. Phelan and I have been working with Citizens for Diverse Milton. And we have stressed to this group the value in this extra time and how, to your point about financing, if we could find funds outside of the school budget to identify students who would really benefit and their scores would go up to guarantee that they would get this extra time. But to their point, the teachers are doing this above and beyond. And as Mr. Phelan always says, I've never said no to anyone who wanted to go to AP camp. I have Dr. Arangio's philosophy that anyone who goes to this AP training, professional development, they're a better teacher. The other four or three classes that they teach for the rest of their careers, their professional careers.
And that's a great point, the kids that want to go, but the kids that are capable but don't.
They seek them out.
They seek them out, yeah.
They seek them out. I know, I can name three teachers who thought it was their success to seek out students who said, perhaps in economics, you'll succeed, and sought out those students and encouraged them to participate. It isn't 100%. You know, we're looking for success for every student, but there's a tremendous amount of recruitment and encouragement and work with students and families on behalf of the high school team. I want to thank you very, very much. I know you put a tremendous amount of time and pride into this presentation for the school committee and the public, and it was outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Continuing, I made a reference to Citizens of Diverse Milton, and that really was my lead-in to, the school committee has a diversity policy. And I would be negligent if I didn't mention one of your past, but past members, Bern Lovely, who worked collaboratively with the school committee, Citizens of Diverse Milton. And we have a diversity, the school committee has a diversity policy. And in this diversity policy, I believe you were the first school committee in the state to have a diversity policy. The policy asks by October 15th for a report out from the superintendent on diversity in the Milton Public Schools. And this diversity report has really grown and taken on different aspects each year. So I'm not going to read to you for the viewing public. This report will be on the web. Before I begin, I want to correct the topic. It's really a report out on 2010, 2011. And so we have five core values, and one of our core values is respect for human differences. So we live by this code when we evaluate ourselves, when we implement new programs, we look at high academic achievement, outstanding instructional techniques, respect for human differences. So first, we always report out on Milton Public Schools' hiring efforts. We work collaboratively and we are committed in the Milton-
We work collaboratively, and we are committed, in the Milton Public Schools, the code that we have developed is that we're not going to, we want to diversify our staff to really reflect the students and the community that we live in. And so to that end, I'm committed, and I've worked, when I was assistant superintendent and now superintendent, with John Phelan as the director and head of all the personnel efforts, that we ask each principal and department head to diversify the pool that they select and appoint candidates from. Because if you don't work hard to diversify the pool, we're not going to diversify the Milton Public Schools staff. We look at each grade, each school, each discipline, and this is a priority for us. Last year, we've got a, we've entered a chart in that of the new staff that we hired, 18% of the new staff we hired this year were non-white. We've, within the last two weeks, put in our October 1 enrollment for student and staff, and I'll be able to, at our next meeting, or later in November, when we get all those numbers back, when they're approved through the state, I'll give you the diversity numbers at each of our schools and system-wide for our staff and our students. Embracing diversity for our schools. We didn't put these in last year, but Mr. Phelan and I are going to report to you. Citizens for Diverse Milton are a group of citizens. Some of them don't even have children in the Milton Public Schools, and they're committed to diversity in the town of Milton and in the Milton Public Schools. I say that, I think I've been meeting with them 25 years, but they said they've only been in existence 15 years. And every month of my career at central office, I've met with this group of citizens. And our goals change. And we put a lot of work into staffing, and then to speak to Citizens for Diverse Milton, they realized what's important is what's happening in the classroom. What's happening with that student and that teacher in every classroom in the Milton Public Schools? And they understand the power of the local school. And so we've worked over the last two years to create, and really, they were a driving force, working collaboratively with John Phelan and me, to create strong diversity committees in each of our schools. And so those diversity committees are at all different places in their careers and in their growth. But we've come to the point this year that each of the diversity committees, yesterday at seven, seven, John, or eight? Seven in the morning, the Cunningham principal, teachers and staff and parents are reported out to Citizens for Diverse Milton, and reported out to John Phelan and me. And it gives them a lot of pride, and Citizens for Diverse Milton want to help these committees. And so we work collaboratively. And so usually, we don't put in highlights from the schools, but these principals and committees really wanted to share. And to me, it's memorializing, it's really giving credit to the work that they have really done in this past year. And so what I asked them for the report to the school committee were their highlights. If you went to the Colley Court School, a tradition that's begun over the last, I believe, two years, John? One book, one school, where the whole community is focused on a theme. Last year was The Hundred Dresses by Eleanor Estes. And each child received a copy of the book, and the teachers created lessons around the book. I went to the culminating activity with families, art lessons, music, and sharing. And again, when these books are chosen, often they're around a theme of diversity. John, do you want to take the next?
Sure. The Tucker School last year did, and is continuing this year, the Power of Families, where at night, families come in, they have daycare provided. And Joelle Augustine, who's a parent at the Tucker School, also a professor at Harvard University, works with families in our Haitian family, Haitian community, to have them know all the things that will be helpful to them to access the town, the school, and work with their children and their teachers. They also do a great job with the Children's Trust Fund and got a grant to eliminate, they got a grant to supply some activities for students and for the Power of Families as well. At the Glover School, they had a night called Glover Goes Global. It was a project where every student celebrated their cultural diversity, and they also had a one-book-one-school project where they read, listen to the wind, the story of three cups of tea. This was, again, a great activity for all the students to take part in, and it's great to see each school taking their own view on how they approach the work of diversity in their schools.
The Cunningham School had a collaboration between the parents and the teachers with an international night, and also, the principal of the Cunningham School, Dr. Spalding, is reaching out to every family, kindergarten and first grade, and new families with individual calls, making sure that their integration, assuring that their integration into the Milton Public Schools is successful. At the Pierce Middle School, the Pierce Global Community Celebration, another event where you talk about cultural competency, and that every family feels that their culture, their background, every child feels that they're recognized, and their background, and they, I said the other day to Citizens for Diverse Milton, I would ask any resident of Milton, any parent, when you go into those libraries, and especially at the elementary libraries at that formative time, you look at the books that are displayed, and, you know, it speaks to all families and all children, and it makes the child who, the child of Haitian descent to see their face on the book, to have that book, the topic of the librarian's lesson. So we work really hard at that, and the Pierce has done a phenomenal job from, you can read the international marketplace, till to a community service project, bringing instruments that they would then donate. And at the high school, the clubs and teams at the high school, Dr. Drother always felt that it had to be in the hands of the students, create a representation of what diversity means to me, which was posted down in the lobby all through the school year. And at the townwide Martin Luther King Event, I would say that the Milton Public Schools take a lead with our choral groups and our elementary choral groups and our high school choral groups. And we work collaboratively with Rabbi Benjamin to have the artwork and the stories displayed throughout the temple with, along with all of the private and parochial schools in town. And again, to these district-wide committees, I'm going to ask Mr. Phelan, this has really been the highlight of what we've done around diversity with CDM during this past two years.
Citizens for Diverse Milton, CDM is an organization, as Superintendent Gomi described, of citizens that just want to keep on the radar screen of the schools, that when we look at our schools, we look at them through that lens in the classroom, instructionally, how we work with parents, in every way we look at our schools. So we have been meeting with this group and partnering with this group for a number of years. And over the last few years, we have developed district-wide meetings where twice a year, we get every diversity committee of each of the six schools, about 40 people in this library for two to three hours to talk about what's going on in each school. Each meeting has a theme for us to ask their schools to look at the work that they do each day through. And it's a great way of making sure that we're always paying attention to this aspect of our schools throughout the year. Citizens for Diverse Milton is a unique group of folks that do a tremendous work, tremendous work on behalf of this town to ensure that we're always keeping this subject in front of us in a positive and constructive way to make our schools a better and more welcoming and more educated place in how we work with all of our students each day. So we meet with them each week, the two nights a year that we meet with them have been very productive and have gathered themes throughout the years, and we look forward to our next meeting in October, and we have one again in April. We do have goals that we work towards each year, and each school has a mini-improvement plan based on those six goals with this collaboration between Citizens for Diverse Milton and Milton Public Schools. So it has been a great partnership, and we look forward to doing it year in and year out. Lastly, as Superintendent Gomi had mentioned, the enrollment data is involved, is included in this report going back to 2008, and we do have preliminary data for the 2011 year. And our student population, in terms of its breakdown demographically, is still 70% students who are non-minority and 30% minority population. So we're seeing our population continue to stay at that 70-30 split, though it may vary in each school, that's the district's current demographic makeup. And lastly, in our student achievement, we presented our scores last week. At this table, we did announce some great scores that are going on at all of our schools. But in terms of diversity in this report, it is great to highlight the significant success and growth of all the students in the district. But specifically, at the Tucker School, we have 55% students of minority status, and as we announced last week, the Tucker is the highest growth, highest-growth school in the entire state. And the work they're doing with students of minority status is recognized as the top in the state, for example, in fifth-grade math. You can't ask for better than that, and we're looking forward to continuing that work of engaging all of our students. But in relation to this report, in our diversity report, it's important to highlight the work that's happening to, in the district on behalf of students of color and students who are minority students in our district. So it's a good news report, and we look forward to continuing the work.
And as we close, when we interview new candidates for teaching or staff positions or leadership positions, I always say to them, this is the best place in America that you could work, and this is the most amazing school district, and one of our assets is our diversity. Our town's diversity, our school system's diversity, and I think it speaks that the school committee has a diversity policy. And responding to this policy and having our principals report to me and incorporating the highlights from what they have done speaks to the importance of this topic and this subject and the consciousness of the Milton Public Schools.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Walker?
I'd be interested in the percentage of diverse students by regular ed and special ed in each school.
Well, we'll give you every school, and we'll break it down for special education and regular education district-wide in each school. And to Mr. Walker's point, last, we've taken the issues that came up at the last school committee and any issues that school committee members have asked for, and here's your green folder. And so questions like that, we're putting in the folder, but if you ever want to bring the topic, again, they're presented in public so that we can have that follow-up if you ever want those answers discussed in public. Again, this is only to expedite the work for you, but it could be a whole nother superintendent's report with all the answers to the questions. But I would be more than willing, you had several MCAS questions, and I think you'll find all of the data that you all asked for in this folder, but we can report out at any time.
I've also seen red, purple, and yellow folders. What is the color code?
He asked for red, but we're on an economy, Ben, yes, so. I'll get that data for you this week, Mr. Walker, and share it with the school committee.
Let them order more red folders. Or diversity folder color, sorry.
And any other?
Any other questions for the superintendent on the diversity report?
Can I just say that it's very thorough, and I think it's another good news story that we're hearing tonight, so thank you.
Very briefly?
I just have one question, only because I'm a so-called foreigner. Do you have, besides minority kids, do you have many foreign kids in the school system?
Yes. We'll do a report.
Yeah. Where English is their second language?
Yes. And we're going to do a presentation on English language instruction and how that, it's almost like the special education world, the responsibilities we have with DE, the Department of Education, to provide the instruction. So at a prior meeting, I think that I've put it on your upcoming calendar on a date in the spring, we want to do a presentation, but I'll get those statistics for you too. A growing population. Very briefly, the happenings, I think that if Ms. Bagley Jones couldn't join us tonight, but she represented all of us, I believe, the FAVA building opened in East Milton, they had their opening with the, for the art programs, and so that's exciting, we can start looking for those programs to be publicized for adults and children alike. Today, our MCAS results were mailed, 4,000 children, how many do you think were tested? 3,000? And today, my first parent guardian emailed me, and I was happy to say, Mrs. X, your ninth grader, your sixth grader, and your fourth-grade scores were in the mail today, and we went to the fastest mailbox we know. So those are being mailed out. Another reminder, next Tuesday, October 18th, very important fundraising effort for the Milton High School Boosters Swing Into Sports Tennis and Golf. And if you go to the Milton High School site, or the Milton Public School site, or swing for sports at miltonboosters.com, you can find out more information. Our first parent advisory, Special Education Parent Advisory Council meeting is October 20th at 7:00 in the Pierce Middle School, and the topic of that meeting will be meet your new administrator of special education. And so the president of our special ed PAC, again, who will be coming to present to you, Jerry Viti, wanted me to share that information. We'll be sending out an email blast, but the Student Flu Clinic will be at the Pierce Middle School on Thursday, October 27th, and I'll put out those hours, and Margaret Gibbons is available if you need more information. Another reminder on that MFE Bonster Dash on Sunday, October 30th, a plug for the Library Gala, October 19th at the Seaport Hotel. And I sent an email to the school committee that they are fund a need, that I think Mr. Phelan has really set the tone for MFE fund a need. Last year, it was Smart Boards, and the year before, it was the Saturday program. The fund a need is going to be for children's literature at the Library Gala. Milton High School Play, circle your calendar for that first weekend in November. And for the school committee, and I was going to have Michelle Cruiser and Dr. Aranjio speak too, the NIASK visit, we're sending out to Milton High School parents, there are several opportunities for parents to meet the team. And so we're recruiting parents from all different, parents involved in FAVA, special education, athletics, ELE, so that we have representative groups of parents meeting with the NIASK team. But I asked the school committee to circle the 4th, Sunday, the 4th, because you'll have your audience with the NIASK group, you'll be at the reception and at the panel. Parent-teacher conferences are coming up, we'll put those on the front of the web. You can look for your school principals and your teachers to be contacting you. And again, Mr. Phelan, to close on our residents, our transportation issues, I think we have solved our transportation issues with the additional bus. Our bellwether, a little secret, is if we go two days, and we think we have settled all of the issues, adjusted all of the stops, and if you remember, we don't have enough time between each of the schools' openings and closings. So our assistant superintendent, John Phelan, is going to convene a committee, he's going to go to the PTO presidents and the staff, and if any school committee wants to serve, member wants to serve on that committee and report out to us by the end of October, because parents and guardians have to make plans around the hours that their children attend school and their daycare issues. So we're going to try to use the best of the research, talk to neighboring communities, we've already gotten input, and hear from the parents, there'll be a survey, and make our recommendations to the school committee. Thank you.
You have the field trip.
We do, oh, excuse me. Mr. Phelan's going to report out on the field trip.
In your packets, there is a memo from myself to Superintendent Gomi that outlines, per the policy of this committee, field trip policy addendum IJOA-2. Each year, we have a consistent list of trips that we offer as a district to go out of state or out of country. Several years back, we made this list so all the parents could plan ahead and know that these trips would be available to their children through their middle and high school years. A lot of them are trips for our world language program, and some for our music program, and some for, one of them for our sports programs. So I have attached to you the policy and the addendum, as well as the list of trips that has already been predetermined as our annual list. If you If you go to that handout, which is the third page, it gives you the list of field trips that we offer and on this annual list. And I have signaled on the left-hand column, the trips that will be active this year. So of the eight trips that we usually provide our students, only five will be running this year. The Washington DC trip will be running this year in May, so we'll have their proposal later on in the school year. That's for the Pierce Middle School 8th grade. An active proposal this year will be the Quebec City trip for our middle school students as well. That's in the spring, and our proposal will be forthcoming. The France trip to, the France trip for our Pierce students is not an active trip this year, so we will not be voting on it. The act, the trip to Spain, to Costa Rica for our students in our world language program who take Spanish will not be active this year. We do have an active proposal for our high school France trip that has changed a little bit, and I have some more materials for you on that. And we will have an active proposal for our Europe trip that happens each year. Another trip that will be active this year, each year, Dr. Burdette takes her music group somewhere within the country, and that proposal will be forthcoming. And this year, we will not be having the annual hockey trip that goes out of state for a college visit. This is an off-year for that group. They have a group coming to us from Illinois. So basically, what we have to do is vote this list of trips as trips that we accept as our annual field trip list that go out of state. And then, I have for you, attached to that, one proposal that is timely, which is the high school Spanish, the high school trip to France that has more information for you to review.
Right, so the high school trip to France is the one referenced in this, it's not an additional?
Correct, this is the...
One of the five.
So what we normally do is that the, per the policy, this group has to vote that this is the annual list for the year. And then, second to that, the purpose for this policy is so, when we do present these trips in more detail, we don't have to start from scratch, we can just let you know that most of the material, the agencies that we use, and the insurance that we provide, and the financial commitment for students is relatively the same, and it allows us to mainstream the, the okaying of these trips for these folks to go on with their work, to organize the students and prepare them for the trip later on this year.
All right, so for purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the five 2011, 2012 field trips as outlined on this document.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Sheridan. Discussion. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Phelan, on the Washington DC and Quebec City trips, what's the price on those?
When they make their proposals, they will provide the detail, but I believe in the outline...
It says same, I was wondering what that means.
I apologize. It's usually around $300 to $500, it's a weekend trip. It's over Memorial Day weekend.
Ms. Kelly?
So I echo the sentiment that I think this should include the price, and granted, maybe there has to be a range, but it would be good to know what same is, because I have no idea what it was last year. The other thing is, is I was reading the policy around field trips. The reason that there was such an emphasis on creating an overnight policy was around transportation because of that tragic accident that happened for that overnight field trip. So I'm not, I guess I'm a little bit confused. If we say, we vote for this, is this basically saying all of these trips are okay to go, or there's more details to come that we would then approve? Because I, as I read that policy, it seemed to me that our obligation was to make sure that the overnight transportation was up to whatever our standard is. So that the bus company, you know, has been thoroughly vetted, et cetera, and that you would know how often someone would be riding on a bus overnight, especially when you're talking about, you know, trips that are a week or whatever. So I guess, I would like us as a committee to think about how we could integrate maybe that component of it into this chart, so that we would be sort of accomplishing what we need to, unless we wanted to just have that brought forward as part of the details for individual trips as they were being proved. I guess, I'm still a little bit confused about how, what, how this process works.
Ms. Phelan?
So the original intent of this chart was to say out loud, so parents could plan year in and year out, that these trips would be available to their children. And at the initial proposing of these specific trips, we gave you a lot of information about who the vendors were, what the price range was, what the fundraising aspects of it were, how many days of school that they would or would not miss. And so, we agree, or you agreed as a body to say that these trips are, in general, okay by this, by this committee. It is then up to, so to vote yes is to say that these trips are okay in general. It is the obligation of each person who is the chaperone or sponsor to come up with that detail again for you. And that detail, their task is to make sure that their information is in the same range of expectation that you have already placed on that trip. So as an example, the proposal for the France trip, which is behind here, you would then have to, you would then review that separately and say, is this up to the standard that we have held this trip to normally? And you would get to vote on that trip at that time. This is, this is again for planning purposes, because if we bring ourselves back, we talked a lot about how do families afford these trips? And one of the ways that it's very helpful for families to afford them is if they know in 9th grade that between grades 9 and 12, that they may have a shot at one of these trips during one of those four years, they can start saving in 9th grade or even 6th or 7th grade. So we're, we're trying to institutionalize them for a support to our parents to be able to afford them. So each trip that is going to be active this year will present a proposal to you, into this group, with more detail that will allow you to analyze that and make sure it meets your standard.
Ms. Sheridan?
So how is this information, because I think this is great, and I think that we've come a long way, just in the short time that I've been on school committee, in terms of being prepared for our field trips and making very reasonable offerings. But in the same vein, how is this information articulated to parents? How do they get this information?
I don't think that they get this information in its totality. I think each school will say out loud, and the reason why the vote is important is because they don't want to start advertising far too early. They say that these trips are available every year. So, for example, the French and Spanish teachers who are proposing the trip that you have with you tonight have been saying last year that there'll be a trip again next year, we're going to France, or we're going to France and Spain this year, they changed the itinerary a little bit, and they put it out to all the students in their class. And then, when they get nearer to planning with more detail in terms of amounts, itinerary, dates, and times, they will ask to hold a meeting. What we try to do is have this vote first, because we want to make sure that they have the okay to move forward with all those details and start to make commitments on behalf of the district and the trip. So I believe that these trips are advertised within the school, for the teachers and the sponsors, and the principals, to attract as many students as possible to review whether or not they'd like to go.
Ms. Sheridan?
I'd just to take that one step further, so if we truly want to say to parents, these are our offerings, and you start in middle school having opportunities, and it travels all the way through high school, then some families might need to make choices in middle school based on opportunities that would be available to them in high school. So I think that it would be wonderful if we could find a way to share this great document, maybe in a different format, but with parents in middle and high school.
I agree, I understand. And let me talk to Mr. Jett and Dr. Aranjio about how we can get that out to parents. And Dr. Fisher, who was our world language director.
It could be through their, you know, newsletters or e-blasts, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Kelly?
Just a comment that I'm appreciative of the fact that the school days missed or decreased in this particular trip.
It did, it did.
Something right up my alley, so I appreciate that.
I was waiting for you to say that, Mrs. Kelly.
And if I might, two things, and we're all so conscious of the fundraising. I tell them that these can and bottle drives, they earn $500 on a Saturday morning, so we encourage them to do that. And we also have to speak to Dr. Fisher, our new world language director, who took a longstanding field trip and really changed it from her prior school district to integrate the students who are in French and Spanish and to go to both countries. And she has only been here a short time, she worked with us years ago, and she changed the trip, and she's very, and the staff, and hopefully the students will be, and families will be excited about that.
Mr. Walker?
So I'm going to accept Ms. Kelly's and Ms. Sheridan's comments as friendly amendments to my motion. So the motion is now that we approve the, in principle, those field trips that are indicated on the chart, and that we recommend that the administration find a way to share detailed field trip information with parents, and finally, that we will be presented with separate proposals for the trips on which we will vote at a later date.
Very good, except Ann didn't hear any of it. Can we try again a little louder?
And that last part is part of our policy, that we get the individual pieces, I believe.
Is that clear?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is the policy clear, are you saying?
I, well, I didn't see that in the policy.
Yeah, I don't see that in this policy, and I'm not sure that it's covering the other. That's why I was sort of a little bit confused as to where we are in this process.
I think we at the table understood the meaning of your motion, I would ask you to try to write it out a little for the benefit of our minutes.
Okay.
All right, so we have a...
One more time?
Well, maybe write it and hand it to her after the meeting.
Oh, that's even harder.
We understand, I think we understand the intent of the motion at this point.
And as this person who seconded it, I seconded again.
Okay.
You don't have to second.
I don't?
No.
You just accept it as a friendly amendment.
Accepted.
All right, anything else on the matter of the provisional approval of these five trips? Hearing none, all those in favor? That is unanimous, thank you. Now, I think the Paris and the France, Paris and Barcelona trip is here, given that it has a October 31st deadline for some initial payments due on it, I think that is here for further consideration, non-provisional, and final consideration, I think, is the purpose of having this attached. So I would entertain a motion, again, for purposes of discussion, to approve the Paris and Barcelona educational trip as appended in this handout.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Ms. Sheridan, second by Mr. Kane. Ms. Kelly?
So I guess this is where I would ask my travel question in terms of how transportation, and granted, they fly there, right? But how do they get around once they're there? And what, what way have we, I guess, communicated the need to meet a minimum standard that I think is set out in law now, in terms of what our obligations are?
Attached to the memo that I had delivered to you last week, there was a brief overview of the trip, the insurance, the vendor being used, and the itinerary. And I just handed you a full itinerary that actually has the day-by-day traveling of the students, what cities they will visit, I believe, when they will travel to and from the United States to France, and then within France and to Barcelona, Spain. The vendor that they're using is one of which we've used very often in past years, Castor Bridge. The difference this year in the trip, as Superintendent Gorme had mentioned, is that we are opening the trip to both of our, both our French and Spanish programs, so they will be visiting Paris, but also visiting Barcelona. The group that, Castor Bridge, the travel group that we have worked with, has been very responsive, responsive to the demands of our sponsors. As an example, Member Kelly, we are not sharing this trip with another school from another area of the United States. When we get off the plane in France, we will have our own bus waiting for our students, who will take us to our own hotel. We actually have demands placed on them that we stay in the hotel without other students, because we tend to enjoy having that separation to make the trip a little more manageable. We have our own buses to rent and use when we are touring different parts of the country, and we're not one small group amongst a large group of students from the United States. We are an exclusive group, and the students will unfortunately pay a little more for that, but the Castor Bridge group is very accommodating and has provided a very competitive price for our students to be able to access these wonderful places. So there is a very, very scripted day-to-day agenda that, itinerary that you have in this folder to review. And the nice part about this trip, it is not as long as in previous years. It is shorter, and it's only a day and a half of school missed as opposed to six days of school in the past.
Other questions? None, then I'll take, call for a vote, huh? Approval of the Paris-Barcelona trip for 2011, 2012 as presented in this document. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed, so, order one. Anything else for your report, Ms. Gorme?
No, thank you very much.
Okay. Move on to the chairman's report. One brief note before we move to the evaluation of the superintendent. Some confusion about who the members of the policy subcommittee are with respect to getting people together for a meeting. My, our notes originally had four members of the committee, which constituted quorum of the full committee, and we were going to whittle that down to three, and I think it was not correctly or maybe totally understood how that was happening. So I believe the four who were on our sheet were Mr. Walker, Ms. Sheridan, Ms. Bagley Jones, and Ms. Kelly. So could I get a, do I have a, show of hands, basically, of who is on this committee?
I think I am.
You think you are? You don't think you...
Well, it has met at 3:30 and then 6 o'clock, I think, earlier before this meeting. There's no way I can make those times on any consistent basis.
It hasn't met at 3:30.
Wasn't their original meeting at 6:30?
Our meeting tonight was at, at 6:00.
Right, but wasn't there one scheduled for like 3:30 originally? Anyways, that was under my impression. I could never make those types, it would either have to be before work or 7 o'clock, I think probably would be the best time I could make it. So I will volunteer to step down from that committee, which will eliminate the issue of being a full committee.
So it would be you, Mr. Walker, and Ms. Bagley Jones would be the three people for that committee. Okay?
So we'll check with Ms. Bagley Jones to make sure that she wants to be.
Okay. The other item, the main item on my report, of course, is the evaluation of the superintendent, and as per the revised open meeting law, last week, you were presented by the superintendent with her self-evaluation. This is the opportunity for members of the school committee to comment on that, as is the, as is the law, we have to comment on these in open session. And my job at that point will be to try to amalgamate the comments and present them as a formal, formal evaluation of the school committee to the superintendent. So, basically, at this point, I would open the floor to the members of the school committee for comments and discussion on the superintendent's self-evaluation. Ms. Sheridan?
I don't want to speak yet, but I just want to ask, since Ms. Bagley Jones isn't here, are we taking away her opportunity to participate in this sharing of the evaluation? Is there a way for her to, at some point, share her comments as well?
Well, there are two easy ways to do it. One would be defer this till the next meeting and do it when the, when the full committee is here. The other would be to solicit written input from her that I could absorb into this. As written input, it is a public document, but as all of our comments are public, because we're in open session. So I mean, it's, it's the preference of the committee, I have, you know, I can do this either way. We can either defer this for a week and allow, to the point at which we have everyone here, or, you know, we can try to make some accommodation for Ms. Bagley Jones. I mean, there is an issue with her not hearing the discussion, it leads up to it, I think, it becomes sort of an isolated evaluation as opposed to the five of us who get to sort of react to each other's comments.
So I suggest that we defer the discussion.
Right, so we'll defer this discussion for a meeting until we have the full body present, and then we'll, we'll take it from there. Well, that ends my report, so. I will now move to the finance subcommittee report, and Ms. Kelly, on the end-of-year report.
Yes. The finance group, under the direction of the Assistant Superintendent of Business, has put together sort of our ending numbers for last year, breaking it out every which way that the Massachusetts Department of, what are they now, Elementary and Secondary Education? Um... Elementary and Secondary Education requires them to. The Finance Subcommittee met last evening and went through any questions that we had. They were answered certainly to the satisfaction of the members that were in attendance. And we didn't take a formal vote, because at that point, we actually think we're a majority of the school committee. But certainly, it would be my recommendation that we authorize the chairman of the school committee to sign off on this report on our behalf and submit it to the state. And I would further ask that once, once it comes back, because I think it populates the enrollment and then comes back with giving some, give some additional numbers in terms of per people spending, et cetera, that the document be posted online on the Milton Public School website.
I take that as a motion.
Saying, does that make a motion?
Sure.
Ms. Kelly has moved to authorize the chair to sign the document on behalf of the school committee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Walker. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? That is unanimous. And I will sign it, since it's right here. Old Business, Citizen Speak responses. Yes, Ms. Kelly.
We did have a student resource letter that was on our agenda. Is that something that we can, do we need to vote on that, or is that set to go? Or how do, how would you like to handle that? It was at least on my agenda from last night.
I think it went around for comment.
Okay. The email?
I think it went back out today by email.
Right.
Okay. So is it in a final form that we could then just sign off on? Or how do we, do we have to wait for another?
We have to wait for the members who weren't present to comment.
I, I responded to it.
Okay.
And then the one other thing, just in terms of Finance Subcommittee that I want to mention, is our budget calendar. We need to sort of move up a bit and squish to meet the deadlines. So I would anticipate that the Finance Subcommittee will be meeting frequently over the next several weeks, so that we can meet the Warren Committee deadline in terms of submission of our budget. I think the intent that we're moving forward with, as we have in previous years, is to submit a level service budget, which is taking what we presently do and all the costs that we know about and moving it forward into the following FY13. And then to come up with what a level dollar budget would look like, and unfortunately, what things the administration and ultimately the school committee would sign off on in terms of cutting in order to meet that obligation.
We just remark also that it's not because we want to submit a level dollar budget. We have been asked to by the Warren Committee, submit a level dollar budget. That's not the sort of thing we sit up at night dreaming that we could do.
Correct. And just in, in fairness to the Warren Committee, they have also asked us to submit a negative 1%, which we believe we would just categorize in terms of what additional cuts might have to happen as a result of that coming off of the level dollar budget.
Did not mean, I apologize, didn't mean to cut off your report.
That's okay. No problem.
Anything else under the Finance Subcommittee? We'll move on. Any responses to Prior Citizen Speaks, or Citizens Speak, or whatever the plural of that would be? Hearing none. Any other agenda items for our upcoming meetings beyond what we have already on our tentative calendar? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for purposes of contract negotiation with the Milton Educators Association, and approval of some executive committee meeting. So although that doesn't actually have to be in the motion.
So moved.
Not to return to, but adjourn from open session, not to return to open, to adjourn from executive session and not return from open session. That was moved by Mr. Walker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kahane. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Itself, yes. Mr. Kahane?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Thank you, Cable. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.